Good morning. First, I'm John Ward. I'm the CRA Executive Director. Mayor, would you like to explain what Manchester Bidwell is in ENCAT? Or you want me to do that? It's one of your -- I know it's a program that's closest to your heart, so...
Well, I'll just tell you how we sort of got involved. Bill Strickland was here probably 10 years ago and spoke at, I think it was the Easter Seals luncheon, or they bring in speakers. He is the founder of Manchester Bidwell. And I was so impressed with him. And I had heard about the program. And I really tried to get something started then, and it just didn't take off. So, one day, John and I were talking, and I said, "You know, I really love this Manchester Bidwell thing." And John said, "Well, I've been there, and I love it, too." And I said, "Okay, let's do it." It's just, it's a great program. National Center for Arts and Technology is an after-school arts program for high school-age students, which is unusual. And they really use the arts to teach incredible life skills and make sure that these young people get their diplomas. And then, it's a jobs program for young 18 to 25 -- oh, no, all of -- really, there's no...
Any underemployed, unemployed?
Yeah. And one of the things that they do so well, and you're here about today, is that when they come into a community, they really survey the job climate and territory and identify those jobs that are needed, where there are vacancies that can be filled. So, we're not preparing people for jobs that don't exist. So, they're preparing people for jobs that exist. And they've come in and done a feasibility study with us that John's going to go over, so that we can move on with actually having our own Center for Arts and Technology and work programs. So, go ahead, John.
So, the good thing about Manchester Bidwell is there is what they're referred to in Pittsburgh in their home office. And then, when they spin them off, I think they've done eight so far, they call them National Centers of Arts and Technology. And when they do this, it's not a matter of deciding, you don't visit with them and say, "Hey, I'd like to have one," and they show up, and it's an automatic sort of a thing. They haven't failed because they come into your community, and they evaluate what's existing, and evaluate for whether or not you can be successful, or their program can be successful there. And it's a multi-year process. The first year is, we form a steering committee from members of the community, and they come in and they evaluate the community, look at what exists there. We pay them a fee to do this. So, it's a completely professional thing. It's spent a tremendous amount of time evaluating the community. And then, at the end of that year, they give you a report. We haven't had the final report yet, so this is an interim report. But at the end of the year, they'll tell you if they believe that the ENCAT program has a high level of possibility of succeeding there. And from that, then you start actually thinking about building a building, hiring staff, determining what the programming is, and that sort of thing. So, it's a multi-year process. In the third year, you should be up and running. So, this is the interim progress report that we've had from their visiting team here.
And just before you go on, we took a team up to Pittsburgh to visit. We took community leaders, business leaders, some people from the city, probably about a year and a half ago now?
It has, it's been, it'll be two years in November, yes, ma'am. So, yeah, we've been doing this. And of course, they're almost finished with their one-year evaluation program. And during, as it indicates here, during the last six months, there are six components that they look at. And so far, they've covered looking at our local education and employment programs, and seeing what exists now, and how they would dovetail into it. Obviously, there are a lot of other things we have to do when we're finished with this, looking at the site, hiring staff, and looking at how we're going to fund this, et cetera. But anyway, this is where we are so far. They use a lot of information sources, personal interviews, and that sort of thing to determine if there's a target population and what the program would look like. So, the question is, are there people in West Palm Beach that can benefit from this kind of programming? See if we can see this thing. Obviously, they look at the economic conditions in the area, what are your academic achievements looking like? Because there's, this is a two-part program when ENCAT comes in. As the mayor indicated, they do arts training for high school children, high school kids, to teach you critical thought processes. So, that's one set of programs. And then, the other program is to set up job training programs. So, let's look at our conditions in the local community. This is the poverty rate in West Palm Beach. The city poverty rate is about 20 percent, and you can see that median line there. And what they're evaluating here is, how does this break out into the folks that are here? And you can see, one of the most disturbing pieces to this is, the second bar indicates that 31 percent of children under the age of 18 live in poverty in our community. You can see Latinos, and young adults, and Black Americans, all above that poverty line in significant quantities. And then, of course, the white population at 11 percent is a significant difference. So, that's starting to show us an indicator. It's hard to read this, but this is showing that there are areas of poverty scattered all over the community. So, you can't say that the south end, the north end, sort of a thing. It's a scattered population, and the household income varies disproportionately by race. You can see the median here, 45,800. And then, of course, under that median, we're finding our Black population, the Hispanic population, the white population, not so much. Poverty by education. Again, now, we're looking at how do these educational programs impact our local community? And you can see, the highest bar on the left here indicates less than high school graduates have a 32 percent living in poverty. The more education that you get, high school, some college, bachelor's degree, obviously, the poverty level goes way down proportionally, 6 percent after college graduation. And of course, the second graph shows you individual earnings, again, contrasted with your educational levels. Less than high school, your average income is $17,000, contrasted all the way up. So, a significant difference, obviously, in educational levels and your income. This is educational attainment among adults, and it's, as it indicates, it varies disproportionately by race and ethnicity. The top, the top bar is all adults. However, you can see that the first bar here, whites have less than 5 percent, less than 5 percent fail to graduate from high school, and then it grows from there. Blacks and Hispanics representing 37 percent of that population group. Academic achievement. You can see, this is Palm Beach County contrasted with the state of Florida. The cohort graduation rate is slightly higher in Palm Beach County, which is something certainly to be proud of, but it's only a couple of percentage points there. Contrasted with the dropout rate, 3.8 percent in the state, and the local county dropout rate is at 5 percent. So, we're seeing an indicator. Post-secondary education. Fortunately, it looks like we're running ahead of the national average generally. Here's graduation rates by race. The district has an 82 percent, as you can see, an 82 percent average of graduation rates. But the Black, Hispanic races are showing significant lower achievement rates, 90 percent white, 93 percent Asian. But again, we're seeing a popular, we're identifying a population with a significant trend line. Dropout rate, same thing as you'd imagine. This is showing that lower academic rates occur on the schools that have a higher population rate, higher rate of poverty. How'd you like to be the principal at Everglades Prep? I mean, they literally have a 24 percent graduation rate. It's terrible. So, again, we're seeing a direct correlation between poverty rates and educational attainment. Your ACT composite scores, and again, it directly corresponds to poverty rates versus educational attainment.
Excuse me, John, we have a question. Commissioner James?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, John. Do you know what the, how did they get this data? What was their process for data accumulation?
They got it from the Florida Department of Education. I'm not sure exactly what they examined to get it, Commissioner.
All right. And even going back with the poverty rates, et cetera, do we...
Right.
Okay. And by the way, I may be the only one, because I can't read this. Can you send us a copy of this?
Sure. I was going to ask him to do that.
There's some good stuff in there, and I'm having difficulty parsing that. But if you could get a copy, that presentation...
Sorry. This is one of those, this is one of those not graphic kinds of things. It's hard to see, but yeah, it's very complicated.
We can look at the trends, but it'd be great. We'll send it out to you.
Fine. Now, this is a tough trend line to see also. But again, unemployment in West Palm Beach is relatively low, 4.2 percent. We're the lowest line here, 4.2 percent, as opposed to 4.3 percent in Florida, 4.4 percent in the county at large. So, we're ahead of that. But again, the likelihood of experiencing unemployment decreases with additional education, as this is indicating. So, from the left, it's less than a high school degree, diploma, all the way over to bachelor's degree. So, if you have less than a high school, if you're less than a high school graduate, those folks have an 11.4 percent unemployment rate. 11 and a half percent of the unemployed workers that we have in this community live under the poverty line, 11 and a half percent. So, that's the underemployed. And here they are. In our community, 1,500 people that are full-time employed live under the poverty line. According to their study, there are six major industries that are driving our local economy. Healthcare, obviously, being number one on the left, followed by retail, food services, administrative services, professional services, and then the construction industry on the right. And all industries indicate about a 15 percent growth factor. So, growth is strong, and it's centered in these areas. And we're looking at this because we're trying to determine what the programming should be at the ENCAT. Who's doing business? Who's growing in their businesses? Where should we focus?
John, we have a question. Commissioner, you?
Yes, sir.
Just because we're in the moment, can we, I'm sure we could add, I think of the marine industry and the opportunity there, and it's in our backyard, and that's definitely an area that I don't think we tap into enough.
I'm not sure if they consider that under construction or not, Commissioner. I don't know where the marine fell in. I'll have to clarify that with them. Yeah, and I've heard that comment before. Certainly, it's obviously a factor.
It's not the larger employer. They're looking at the industries that...
Right.
The largest, most major industries. And while the marine industry is, you know, important here, it doesn't employ a lot of people.
And a lot of our marine industries, the things that take place at Raivovich and things like that, are a lot of workers from out of the area. A lot of those folks live out of their van. These painters come in and paint the boats, and then they leave, so they're...
Part of the reason they've said they do that is they can't find people in the area. So, I think, you know, Commissioner brings up a legitimate point. And I've also heard that a lot of skilled labor is older and retiring, and not a lot of people around who can build boats anymore.
Oops. Let's go back. There are 18 middle-scale occupations in our area that meet the criteria of the Manchester Bidwell model. And the model is driven by creating a median hourly wage that provides a living wage, at least, by their definition, $11.62 an hour. The rate of growth meets or exceeds the benchmark 15 percent for the area in growth, and a projected rate of growth is at or above 13 percent. And they are...
It might be that current rate of growth, 15 percent projected, that might have kicked out the marine industry.
And they are. Here's the greatest demand for middle-skill occupations. Restaurant cook. Now, you can see, or maybe if you can read it, we've got total jobs right now this year over 7,000, 7,600 jobs. But the annual openings in 2016 are 483 jobs. That's a 19 percent job growth rate. And the median hourly wage in that industry is $13.08. So, it's higher than the $11.62. They're growing rapidly. There's a need for it, and the projected growth is 21 percent. So, that's a key industry. Obviously, we ought to focus on that. Truck driver, food prep worker, automotive technician, carpenters, and electricians. I know that we had, there was a training, a carpenter training program with the associated contractors. I think that they closed that down when the economy went south. So, we're looking at how can we, how can we get that going again?
Well, and if you recall, we also, Lincoln Culinary Institute closed down recently, leaving a big gap in our community for...
Precisely. And we're going to see that in a minute, because not only do they look at what are the jobs and the rates of them, and rates of growth, but also, what are the training programs that exist right now? Who are we training to fill these jobs? So, these look like the top key, greatest demand areas, and areas that we might want to focus on for our programming. Here's the moderate demand. Medical assistants, LPNs, plumbers, computers, support specialists, HVAC mechanics. When you see the highlight, that means that it's gone below that 13 percent future growth piece, and all of the job hourly rates work here, and the projected growths are all strong. So, the only thing that makes this a moderate demand job is, again, the annual openings, and you can see that in the second, second piece here. All of these jobs, the high-growth jobs, you can see that there are at least 230 to almost 500 potential openings next year. So, that's a high-growth area that we could play right into. The moderates, if I can go back to it... The moderates are between 100 and 200. So, there's an opportunity there. They pay well, it's just not that many jobs there. So, certainly, if you're a plumber, it's going to pay well. $1,831 is your median wage, 16 percent growth, but there are only about 150 of them needed next year. So, that's, is it a good job? Certainly, it's a good job. It's just not, it's not the biggest need. And then, lower demand, here we have, again, dental assistance. That's a great-paying job, $1,595 with 22 percent projected growth, but only 12 percent going forward. So, we don't see a lot of growth in that area. Aircraft mechanic, psychiatric technician, medical records tech, phlebotomist, machinist, on and on.
A psychiatric technician?
Psychiatric tech. You know, I don't know.
Somebody who...
Somebody that, I don't know.
You know, one of the things, we're in the process of having an economic development study done, and I talked to the people who are doing the study preliminarily, and one of the things they said is that we're growing jobs here in West Palm Beach faster than we have people to fill them. So...
Yeah. We've already heard that from the, from the early studies. They're indicating that. And of course, 15 percent growth is a healthy growth rate, anyway. So, the summary of this is that there is a, there are a significant number of the city's population that experience substantial economic distress. They are living in poverty, obviously, and working hard. Lower academic achievement is present in the high schools with a high concentrations of economically disadvantaged families, and many local workers need jobs that pay a living So, does the market provide rooms for types of the programs like CAT furnishes? So, what we look at here are two levels, the after-school arts programs and the career training programs, what exists today that are training people for those industries that we've identified as high need. In the after-school arts component, the Manchester Bidwell model indicates that they want to have professional artists teaching the class, dedicated studio spaces, so it's not a part-time thing. It obviously shows an importance of the work to the students, industry standard resources, continuous art experiences, low student-to-teacher ratios. Mentorship, of course, goes along with this training. It comes at no cost to the student. It's a world-class facility, and it's an after-school program, so that high school students can still stay full-time as students, and then take these courses in the evenings or after-school. There are few currently available to high school students. And by this, they've analyzed all of the arts programs, both the private sector and public sector. And you can see, the overlap in the center indicates to them that there are three existing programs that are similar to the Manchester Bidwell model. I assume you're all familiar with the Armory Arts Center. And again, they have a plethora of classes there, professional training, the CCE in Northwood Village as well, and then the Palm Beach Photographic Center. So, they're indicating that those are the programs that are similar, or might be similar to programs that they would...
John, excuse me, we have a question. Commissioner James?
Thank you. And maybe you'll get to this later. Now, we just looked at the current state of the economy and where the jobs are, where the jobs are needed.
Yes, sir.
How does art education tie into the need, the industry sectors?
It doesn't.
Okay, so...
Art education...
It's two separate programs. So, the after-school arts program is really to keep kids engaged in learning and to help with critical thinking, and to have mentorship and make...
So, it's meeting a different need?
Huh?
It's meeting, this is meeting a different need?
Correct. And then, the job program is the job program.
All right, okay.
It's preparing you for life. There are any number of studies that indicate that arts training increases your critical skills, critical thought skills. So, it's, they're not trying to raise you to be an artist. They're trying to raise you to think critically and work your way through problem-solving issues. We've all heard the story about the cashier that can't make change and things like that. It's a critical, critical thought process.
And then, there's data supporting all of this?
Yes, sir.
All kinds.
All kinds of it.
This is a very highly researched program, and I think for the commissioners who've been here, I bought books for each of you. I don't know if you, who got it, who didn't, but new commissioners. It's called, Bill Strickland's book's called Making the Impossible Possible, and it's really excellent and a good read, you know, not a really, it's a good book.
It is a good book. This is indicating the kind of visual arts programs that are available in the high school. So, again, what we're trying to do is focus on the programs that are available versus what's not available, and where they would want to fill a need. So, as you would imagine, digital programs are, of course, everywhere. Everybody's working with those sorts of things. And decreasing in numbers, design, photography, ceramics, sculpture. But this helps them focus in on the kind of arts program that they would want to focus on here. From the career training component, this is the jobs training thing. Again, demand-driven training. That's why they're identifying, what are the jobs? What are the high-need jobs? What are the growth jobs? Which ones are going to pay us? So, demand-driven, career-specific, again, we've all seen these programs where somebody goes to classes for a year, or come out with a certificate, and there's no job accounting. Well, great, I've got a, I've got a certificate. We're talking about training right into specific jobs that have needs. Specialized learning spaces. The best example is, we were talking, I've been talking with our friends at CEMEX, and depending on where we locate this center, if we do program in the trades, for instance, you've got to be able to stack, block, and do the work. It can't be a one-size-fits-all kind of a classroom thing. You need to, you need to have job-specific spaces.
They've actually had industry come in and duplicate their labs, for example.
Exactly.
You know, Heinz is in Pittsburgh. So, Heinz came in, and Bayer came in, and they duplicated what the lab looks like actually in the business, so that, so it's realistic.
It's worth mentioning that we've all been into nonprofits, and it's where your old computer goes to die, and you go see these ratty carpets and old furniture, and everybody gave them stuff. Manchester Bidwell is a first-class operation, and it's largely because they have relationships with major manufacturers and suppliers. I know when I went there, and it's been a decade ago, but I went into their, into their digital lab, and they had the best Macintosh machines. I'm salivating, everything they said, the fabulous green walls. You go into their office spaces, and it looks like your office space. They have wonderful, you know, desks. They have a relationship with Steelcase, and just it's, they do a first-class job. So, this is not, it's not your grandfather's nonprofit. It's a completely different thing.
One of the other things that they do in Pittsburgh is they have social enterprise. So, they have a 45,000-square-foot greenhouse where they grow orchids, which they then sell to Walmart, and Home Depot, and some of the other places that sell orchids.
It's a fabulous program, and again, indicating how innovative this program is. Again, this is an out-of-the-box thought process piece. But anyway, stimulated work environment, low, again, this is no cost to the student. Low student-to-teacher ratios, mentorships, of course, job placement, that's what it's all about. It's a short-term class, typically a year, and it's designed to graduate in a cohort as a class, so support for each other. Here's the availability of the career training activities in West Palm. And you can see, obviously, aircraft mechanic, culinary arts, phlebotomist, there are no training opportunities for those skills, as opposed to the medical assistant program, which has 14 opportunities that they've identified, maybe more. So, do we want to be in the medical training business? I would say no. We need to be in the business that is obviously short. So, I don't know that we're going to train truck drivers, but who knows? Carpenters, electricians, machinists, plumbers, high-need things. So, again, all of this is directed toward identifying the jobs that are needed, that pay, and are growing, and we have a need for training facilities here. So, in a nutshell, the training gaps in the local market, the largest gap is the culinary arts piece. And the mayor mentioned, we had Lincoln Culinary here, and they were graduating hundreds of students every year. You can imagine, where do all these restaurants get staff? All their cooks and everything, that's gone. They closed not because of a lack of jobs. Lincoln decided they didn't want to be in that business anymore. So, they kept their mechanic schools and closed their culinary school. So, there's a huge need for that right now. Moderate gaps in aircraft mechanics, auto service techs, and other things. And it goes over to the uncertain list there, the plumbers and the trades, the trade kinds of things. We know that need is there. The Manchester Bidwell team is coming back later this month, I think on the 26th, and I've got them lined up to meet with the Contractors Association, and they want to talk about potentially sponsoring a trade program in line with this sort of thing. So, they're actually pretty excited about that.
We also, are you going to talk about the advisory committee that we have?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, we do have an advisory committee with people from the community.
Right. So, in summary, the conclusion is that the local market certainly has room for both kinds of programs, the art program and the job training program. Ceramics and sculpture look like the clearest opening for the after-school arts program as a focus. It's interesting that Bill Strickland, the fellow that started this thing, is a ceramic artist, and this kind of follows along on his piece. And the culinary arts represent the clearest opening in the career training, and we know that. We've had the, we've had the two head chefs that were running the Lincoln program come to see us over a year ago about, you know, what are we going to do about this? So, we know the demand is there. So, does the, does the target population exist? Yes. We have that level of poverty and that level of underemployment, unemployment in the community. The educational level needs improvement. The on-time graduation needs help. College readiness needs help. All of those things that this program is designed to furnish. This is, this is a chart that indicates the most viable programs. And again, this is trying to get us focused on what programming would look like. Certainly, the most viable is culinary arts and the career training, but also potentially carpentry, electricians, plumbings, aircraft mechanics. Marine mechanics would be right in that, right in that area. And then, of course, the least viable would be the medical assistant piece. We don't need it, because they have a, they have a training opportunity now. So, the next steps are, to finish, the last thing we have to do is, we've determined, we think, we don't have the final report yet, and we'll have that in about a month, but it appears that there's a need here, and it looks like a viable need. So, the next steps are, we have to determine where the site would go. Their requirements are at least a 10,000-square-foot building. Their requirements are at least a 10,000-square-foot building. They have already asked us if we could build them a 20,000-square-foot building, and we'll have to scratch our heads about where that should go, and then how we were gonna fund that will tie into it. The historic northwest is a good target area, certainly. We had a mention the other day of, we've got the old health department building over here downtown, it's a little over 20,000 square feet, that might be an opportunity. So we'll have to start evaluating where the sites are and what the costs are attached to it. The people piece is that they immediately want to start by hiring an executive director for the program, so that, that person could start developing the programming, hiring people, and have a full input into, into the sites and everything about the development of the program. And then there's the money piece. Who's gonna furnish, who's gonna furnish the dollars? Who's going to be in charge of the sustainability and going out and finding that philanthropy piece? So all of that has got to go. And that is my presentation.
Thank you, John. Questions? Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Speak right into this. Thank you.
You got me now?
Yeah.
I think this is a really interesting presentation that ties into a lot of other things that the mayor's office is doing, so I just wanted to see if there was any insight on how this ties into the mayor's Village Initiative and the Cities United program that are up and running now, to see how it all works together.
Yeah, and as you said, it does, it ties into everything that we've been doing through the Village Initiative, and as we go through the planning for that initiative, there are theme areas that include education and jobs, so this is gonna fit right into it. Would you add anything to that, Kevin?
No, I'll do it.
Thanks for the question.
Good.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I think it's very exciting, so I saw a lot of the same kind of research and data at the school district, and I'm curious, you know, you put the dollar sign up there, but it didn't mention how much it costs, I mean, do they have any idea yet?
Well, again, a lot of that's gonna depend on where it goes and the size of the building. If we, in fact, do build 20,000 square feet, do we already own the dirt? I can tell you that in thinking about this for a while, the historic northwest has the population, it's on, you know, bus routes and things like that, it's easy to get to. We had looked at the area that's, the Salvation Army is there, and on the north side of that, there's a large playing field that, that we have leased to them, that's a possibility for it, or there are some other areas in the city, we'll have to look at that. Again, I indicated the, the former health department building down here.
So, yeah, also--
Remodeling a building is not a lot cheaper than building a new building, so we'll have to evaluate, what do you get at the end of the trail?
Also, we're hoping to get more, we're hoping to get industry involvement in this, and, you know, that we'll be able to get in-kind or other kinds of support from--
The Manchester-Bidwell program accents the fact that if this is a government program only, it will fail. It will not be sustainable, we will not support it 20, 30, 40 years from now, we will not do that. So our job is to, is to get it up and running and underpin it and help them get focused on how to do their job. But as the mayor indicated, last year, when we started the evaluation committee, they sent us a list of all of the folks in the community that they wanted to serve on this board, and it included everything from the arts, who, leaders in the arts, to leaders in industry across the board.
And school district.
Yeah, the school district, the educational piece, and we had people from that, the hospitals as well, participating in it to try and point them in the right direction and get them talking to the right people. And it's also to develop the relationships that they'll need to go forward.
Commissioner Eary?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for your presentation, Mr. War. So a very sobering presentation.
Sorry.
Not, not surprising, and so really comments, two comments, Mayor. And it, I think it speaks to the heavy lift that we have in terms of a government, in terms of a city, and highlights the importance of having community organizations and companies, you know, come on board with that. So that's one, very sobering. The second piece is, you know, if we could wave a wand, Mayor, this would be done on your watch, in your administration, but the fact is that this is going to take some time. And the question I have is, we are, at this point, I think, a couple hundred thousand dollars in the queue with the assessments and whatnot. It's my hope, and I was just, it's not a question, it is my hope that, I too have seen the research and have read the book and familiar with the program and support it, but understand that this is, it's going to take some time, and it's going to take the support of a different commission. And so as much as we can continue to kick that can down the road, I just think that's something that we have to call out, and it's just acknowledge that.
Thank you for that, but, and I just would add to that, it's gonna take community support, and I think it's really important for us to build that advisory committee in the community so that no matter who's sitting here, the community's saying, "We want this and we need it," so.
I'd also suggest to you that we'd started kind of down this road a couple of years ago, when we were scratching our heads about charter schools and that sort of thing. This is a, this is a proven program that's working in eight other communities now, and it's focused on, I think, a very specific scalpel-like approach to the problems that we face. It's not a general education piece, it's not a hail mary sort of a, let's try and make you a smarter person kind of a thing, but it's a very specific thing that, that is a long-term view. You know, when we go into the community, the community needs jobs now, and they, they need something to do tomorrow, and we've got problems that we need to solve right now. And we have to have the strength, I would encourage you to have the strength to, to think in that long-term piece, and this is what our discussions with the community are. Here's what we're doing today, but this program is what we're doing for the long haul, and it's gonna take us three to five years to get there, but once it gets here, it's gonna be significant and provide very real benefits. I will tell you that as the CRA director, if all I'm doing is painting houses and planting trees and rebuilding a jazz club, and I'm not providing economic opportunities and growth for this community, then we haven't done our job. So we, we're excited about this.
Super. Any other questions? Commissioner James?
So we do have a steering committee in place, and how often have they met, and what's come out of their discussions?
Mayor, Commissioner, we've had the steering committee in place for about nine months now, and they've met twice. They didn't wanna, they didn't want, they wanted high-powered individuals that they didn't drag to a meeting every, every three weeks.
And some members of the steering committee actually went to Pittsburgh with us.
Exactly. We're gonna meet again, I think, the 26th of this month, at which point they're gonna bring us, I think, the final recommendations, and at that point, we need to form boards on an ongoing basis. Who's gonna serve on the board? Who's gonna be, who's gonna be able to commit to fundraising and that sort of thing? Because the heavy lift, as the commissioner indicated, starts now. We've, we've got the theory down, it would have been simple, we've paid them $150,000 this last year to do the study, I think we can take their recommendations and go forward. But now's, now's the tough part, and going forward is gonna cost us $300,000 next year. $150,000 for the continued involvement of Manchester-Bidwell, and $150,000 will be dedicated toward staffing and the first cost toward the unit itself.
Okay. Commissioner Lambert?
I just didn't hear, is part of the advisory committee other funders as well, like foundations?
They will be, they will be now. They weren't this last year, although we did have a member from the, from the community foundation.
Well, and Quantum.
Yeah, and Quantum, Quantum was on it as well. So they can certainly move forward with that.
Anything else? Thank you, John.
Thank you.